I have a short opening statement and it's one of those double edged statements. There's some good news out of it, but there's also some sad news. Organizations are a lot like people. They come into our lives, leave their marks, move away or pass on. One organization that most of us thought would never become defunct is the Buchanan Rotary, but after 101 years, that's exactly what happened at midnight last evening with the club disbanding and surrendering their century old charter. The reasons for that disbanding are not important and need not be discussed here. Buchanan Rotary has been very gracious to our city for decades in ways too numerous to list here. Suffice to say, our city was very pleased when a few months back, the Rotary pledged $10,000 toward our capital campaign to realize construction of our new multi-use building that will soon go up right beside our existing Stockard facility. One of the old club's final measures was to allocate several gifts to our city, to our city organization, including payments of $6,200 to our fire department, $5,700 to our police department, and well exceeding their original pledge, $15,142 toward our Stockard Capital Campaign for a grand total of $27,042 in gifts to our city. We thank all of the Rotarians for their wonderful gifts that will greatly enhance all of our citizens' lives and our BU community. I'm also pleased to report that the scuttlebutt is, is that a new permutation of the Buchanan Rotary Club is already organizing, with many of the old members coming together to continue to perform wonderful work for our old place. We thank the former group for all they've done and wish the new group all of the best in the future. With the Jenkins Automotive Services gift of $25,000 received just this Tuesday past, our SYCC capital campaign has now well eclipsed $300,000. We thank the Buchanan Rotary and John Jenkins and his family for their wonderful gifts to our city. We are all blessed to live in a community where so many aid our good causes. When I utter that old line about we're all in this together, the "we" is very broad indeed. Okay, so, thanks to the Rotary and thanks to Jenkins and we're getting there. The Buchanan Planning Commission and mainly Mr. Curtis Wilkerson is here to tease us a bit with the 2025 plan. So Curtis, without further ado, I'll call upon you. I thought maybe you'd bring some of your cohorts with you, but other than Mr. Ryland's here, that's, you guys are just two of the nine, huh?
Busy.
Yeah, well, come on up and tell us what you know, buddy.
So, I think each of you got a copy last week and so forth. And so my job here tonight is just to talk to you a little bit about the process by which it came together. And then it'll be, it comes from the Planning Commission's hands to yours and we can be down with our part and you and CJ take care of it. So let me kind of talk a little bit about what the goals of the Planning Commission was in this particular situation. One, we wanted to take the 2015 plan and build upon the successes that it had. So essentially, we're creating a very significant update to it. We wanted to satisfy state code. We wanted to be very inclusive. We wanted to be completely transparent. We wanted to be very positive. And we wanted a digestible plan in less than 20 pages. And so what you have in front of you hits all of those goals. I can speak for everybody in the Planning Commission to say, we had a very good time. We enjoyed the conversation. We worked together well and I think that we came to you with a quality document. On top of those 17, 20 pages, something of that nature, with a very thick background of what all the work that went into this process is. And I want to talk a little bit about that so that everybody knows what that represents. The first thing we did was we researched plans across the country of similar sized municipalities so that we would know what other communities were doing. The next thing we did was we held a series of meetings every month and sometimes more often than that, they're all open to the public, they're advertised well in newspapers and were well attended. We had over 1,000 hours of work by the Planning Commission and stakeholders. We did it all within a single one-year process, which was the goal from the first meeting that we had last year. We created subcommittee chairs for each section that you see within the document. And those subcommittee chairs helped stakeholder meetings and focus groups in order to bring the information together. We took the 2017 goals that were outlined by this body, by City Council as well as City Department heads, and put those into the document as well, pulled from that information. One of the key parts that we did also was taking the 2015 plan and doing an analysis of what was completed, what was pending, and what was no longer applicable for this particular situation. And then we reviewed the other updated plans that various Planning Commissions had worked on in the last few years in order to take into account their wishes and feelings and information they'd gathered and we want to express our thanks to those groups who were on previous Planning Commissions. Then did a survey that had around 730 respondents, which is almost double the number of people who participated in the 2015 plan survey. We partnered with a lot of stakeholders to distribute that survey, both digital and hard copy. We had collection boxes set up around, throughout the entire community and public locations. And then we worked with the West Virginia Wesleyan College interns to compile the data and for it altogether. Lastly, we had a large event, Public Safety Complex, which many of you here today attended. It was a packed event in January with not good weather, so it actually was amazing. But if the breakout groups were led by the subcommittee chairs and it was widely advertised in posters, billboards, newspapers and social media. The reason I tell you all that is because beyond the 1,000 hours plus that the Planning Commission had and the stakeholders had, there were additional thousands of hours that the citizens of the Buchanan community had in the surveys and the meetings and everything else. There was a lot of information that went into this piece. At this point, the Planning Commission brings the draft before you to consider. I understand that in accordance with state code, you will now have a process by which you will have public areas and so forth. It is our recommendation to you to accept the plan as presented. And we want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the community and appreciate the opportunity to work with our fellow citizens of the greater Buchanan area and we're bringing this together for you.
Curtis, all of the thanks is from us here at this table and our entire community for the tireless work that you all have invested. I had a funny feeling that the composition of that group would come together well and it's even exceeded what I think our expectations were. We applaud you and we sincerely thank you. Susan popped in and she's one of those taskmasters. I mean, I put the...
Okay, just say, I know.
Years and years.
This would not have been possible with that.
Yeah, exactly. And having Rich Clemmons and his many years as zoning housing enforcement officer and city reporter and of course CJ knows a thing or two about...
There was that one weak link.
You may have a zing there, old buddy.
Thank you, may I have another?
He's using his own CJ as a... But we thank you.
You may want to modify his behavior.
What we need to do is align the expectations of the community.
Modify the behavior.
So, we're going to call upon Tom O'Neill here in a little bit to tell us what we need to do next. Is there anything in the document itself? I have perused it, but I sure haven't memorized any sections of it. Is there anything that jumps out or are there any surprises?
So, no. And that is the surprising part. So what we found is that people were happy, really. I mean, across the entire Buchanan community, people feel a sense of, it's not complacency, it's that they really enjoy this community. They think things are moving in a very positive direction. They're pleased that people are working together and that entities within local government are working together. There is the hopes that city and county government would find more efficiencies, especially in those various subparts because it allows for better buying authority and so forth. And there's, one of the things that we did find was, you know, there's a number of things that are applicable out of 2015 plan that are still there, but some things were just, we've moved on from. Those problems were no longer here. A couple of things that we did not do on purpose. We didn't put hard deadlines on our recommendations. We believe that you, as the elected body, are just hearing the voices of people through this plan and you choose how to take that from there. The other thing is, it is not what one would consider completely comprehensive. If there are certain, it's within the purviews of the committee that there were certain things that didn't make it in, including recommendations that we changed the state constitution. I'm just very careful that's not relevant, right? So, and although that information is in the notes and the addenda that go with it, which is several hundred pages, we figured that if there are other important things that come about, citizenry of the region will bring it to your attention. The other part is, we were very careful to go through line by line of state code in order to make sure that all the parts that we were doing matched that, so you'll see those parts lining up with that. The couple of key things that I do want to bring your attention to is that people have a lot of concern about food. A lot of concern. A lot of people also understand the medical issues that go with that. They also understand there's a lot of things that aren't within cities' control of that, that are greater societal issues, addiction issues and so. So there's some stuff that comes out in the plan that are observations, you'll see it in the survey data and so forth. And, but for the most part, people were really happy. I mean, it was, that was, which is good news.
Dr. Alli, is there anything you'd like to add to that? Is the, are she the vice chair?
She is.
I'm the vice.
Absolutely.
Curtis alluded to it, but there was a theme of collaboration and partnership through the responses and the focus groups. I don't know that it came out more clearly in all of the subcommittees' actual goals, but I think it was about efficiency, but it was also about synergy and some concern over, which was related to the substance use disorder to some extent and economic development, some concern over, are we preparing the children appropriately to be ready for what's coming in terms of economic development and that sort of thing? But there was also a lot of hope in regards to education too, with some changes at the board office and that sort of thing.
CJ, is there anything you want to add?
I'd just like to thank Curtis and Susan for their leadership. I served a peripheral role and didn't, my attendance wasn't what I would have liked it to be, but it's, what they present here is a lot to do with their leadership and the time and effort they both put into it, so thank you.
Matt, any additions from your perspective?
No. I feel like I have more watch than participated. And Curtis and Susan wrote up pretty amazing to city something come together. I just remember more of really things the last time, a lot of chatter that they seem to have most times.
I think Curtis suggested this, that the 2015 plan is a pretty good document and it helps. I mean, sometimes I've taken on tasks over the years where you get something that is beyond half-baked, I mean, on the bad side. And you're trying to tweak it and it'd be better sometimes just gutting and starting over. And I don't think that was part of your exercise.
No, it wasn't. And that was one of the reasons we did the analysis of 2015 plan to begin with, to see what relevant pieces were there. The other point that comes to it was, when we're looking at a plan, it's called 2025 Plan, we're talking about five or six years ago, we were once even. And so one of the key considerations that the Planning Commission had in this was, what is urgent versus what's important? So how many things are a problem today that we want to address versus a larger issue and so forth? And when we're talking about planning, we're talking about importance as opposed to nature. That I think baited into this plan really well in that. The other thing that I appreciated the Commission early in the process doing was agreeing that the document should be succinct enough that people would actually read it as opposed to a thick tome, a told story to be put on a shelf. And don't get me wrong, there's a lot of stuff in that addenda, again, to the survey results and so forth. But by keeping the document within a readable level, we're hoping that people actually read it and therefore choose as an elected body to utilize or to execute as you see fit.
Council, questions for Curtis or Susan or CJ or Matt? Now's the time.
I just want to say, you know, one time I served on the Planning Commission as a member of the City Council and it was a farce, okay? It was total wacko. It was. We needed the leadership and the people that were there, Susan, Curtis and all the others who had the experience. Good grief. Rich, okay? We needed the right people on that to make it move forward because it was not happening. And I did review it and I just was like, yay, yay, okay? And I'm very appreciative of what y'all have accomplished, all of you, all of you. Even though CJ did not get to go to all the meetings, it was, it was, and it's hard, it was hard. He was rooting for you two. And I'm very, very happy and proud of this Planning Commission, very much so.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, Curtis, so, and Susan, what, how do we have this? Do you have any techniques or strategies how we can get these intentions into play through the departments or the committees or...
We want you to execute the plan too.
Yeah, and so one key part, and although, let me start with this phrase, that the state code section that breaks down the pieces that have to be in it is massively antiquated and needs to be rewritten by the state legislature. It is important, okay? But, and it's a laborious, ridiculous process to outline the code. However, the sections that it breaks down that we wanted to address are valid. And so each of those sections that you see before you, like it's broken down almost in chapters, I think it would be who, City Council, take it one chapter at a time and just in order to have a discussion on those with bringing in the stakeholders. The stakeholders are fairly obvious. In the healthcare realm, you know who to bring in. If it's housing, you know who to bring in, recreation, and in the appropriate departments. And in order to go through those and talk about what potential deliverables and metrics could be occurring from them. But my recommendation is literally, it's a simple document and I think that that's the way to go about it, is utilize the chapters that are already there.
Yeah. Thanks.
I think the other element of this, we've had other things where it's come up over the years, either my time as city attorney or the last three plus years as mayor, somebody will say, oh, we did that. We already, we already did that document. I think that was back in 2009 or 1981 or whatever it was. And somebody will go to the shelf and blow the, here it is, you know? That's not what this is supposed to be. This is supposed to be a living document that we will be attentive to and try to employ as we go forward in the years to come.
I want to thank the whole Planning Commission for what they've accomplished in Curtis and Susan and CJ. It's really important that is, it's a, as you indicated, the document itself is not too long, but you have the addenda there for anybody who wants to go and do the further research. And what's interesting to me, I've been involved in different plans for different organizations, both for profit and not for profit, is that once we decide that we're going to accept this plan, immediately, those of you who are on the Planning Commission, others will start thinking about the next 10 years beyond this plan. And that's always important. You know, you don't, it's a moving document and things, something could happen a year or two from now that would have to make us make some additional adjustments to what you're currently looking at. But thank you so much for the time you put in and the, I haven't perused it yet, but I'm going to have a reader come in and read it to me and I'm looking forward to it, so.
So we don't have to keep our Planning Commission members here any longer than what they need to. I would entertain a motion that we bring F1 under strategic, which is presentation and acceptance. To the table. I have a motion by Thomas and a second by Alba. Is there discussion to bring the matter to the table? Any discussion on that motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion is now on the table to formally accept this document. And then we could have Tom O'Neill weigh in on the legal particulars too. I'd entertain a motion that we approve F1, which is to accept the Planning Commission's 2025 comprehensive plan. I have a motion by Mrs. Alba. I have a second by Mrs. Buckle. Is there discussion on the motion? April would like to be heard. April.
Oh yeah, I had a question. How many of you have actually read some of it or all of it? Great. Good to know.
Some. Got a lot more to do.
Yeah.
That was involved a lot with the 2015 plan and putting it before Council. Mr. O'Neill, do you want to tell us what we need to do next?
We still have a discussion.
Under state code, we can't, cannot officially adopt the plan tonight. State code sets out a long process by which the comprehensive plan is considered and then adopted, rejected or amended by the governing body, which is, which is you, City Council. Tonight is intended for submission of the plan to the governing body. Code calls for a public hearing to take place before adoption can take place. And that public hearing cannot take place without at least 15 days notice in a publication. So frankly, can't take any action to adopt the plan even at the next meeting. As soon as that we could is the September 5th meeting. If, if the Council would like to place this on the agenda for the September 5th meeting, we will handle the publication requirements to Class 1 legal ad. In fact, Class 1 legal ads kind of throughout the whole process, through the Planning Commission's process has been engaged, they've actually published Class 2 legal ads, which are, which is a little above and beyond what the, what the code requires. But from a timeline perspective, tonight you can vote to, you can vote to accept the presentation, but we need to be clear that it is not an adoption of the plan. This is not a final, this is not final disposition of the plan. If it is, if it is accepted, if the presentation is accepted tonight, it's scheduled, the last public hearing for September 5th, which is our September meeting date can take place. Typically, we have these public hearings immediately prior to a regularly scheduled City Council meeting. In addition, assuming that the Council would like to adopt the plan, it needs to do so by ordinance. So we would then at the, we would have prepared, in the event that the Council wants to, wants to do this, I will have prepared in ordinance, adopting the comprehensive plan, prepared, ready for first reading on the September 5th, September 5th regular meeting at the Council with the second reading and adoption to take place possibly on September 19th of this year.
Effectuation.
Within 30 days, yeah, within 30 days from following. Now, the Council has three options. It can accept the plan, it can reject the plan, or it can amend the plan. If it is rejected or amended, then it goes back to the Planning Commission.
Did you have Curtis say that he would like to do some more work on that stuff?
Six of me, right?
So if, so the Council, in voting on the, in voting on the motion that is before the Council right now, I'll interpret that as a, assuming that the motion is adopted, I will interpret that as a directive to engage, to publish legal notice, to prepare for action on the September 5th meeting.
So basically what we're doing, to clarify what the motion that we have on the table that we're, as Mr. O'Neill was very careful, he said, we are accepting the submission or the submittal of this document, but we still have to jump through some hoops before it would become effective, including the public hearing on September 5th, first reading September 5th, second reading September 19th, and it would not be effectuated until October 19th. Everybody agree on that?
Is there, David, is there a process where, you know, with the Buchanan website, where we disseminate the...
Dave, I think, but I didn't check, I think Callie already has that on the...
Yeah, okay, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that.
I think she put the draft on the, before she left for vacation. I'll check that when we get home tonight.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, if she did, then that means that she has the PDF. I was just going to suggest that when you share it, you use the PDF version.
Yeah.
Teresa asked for the Word version and I sent it to her today, but you know that people can, they want one of the Word documents.
Well, if it's not on the website already, we'll get it on there.
Okay, please use the PDF.
Yeah, I think that's really important. And then is there, is there a process? I know when you have, when we have the public hearings right before our council meetings, oftentimes, you know, they're not well attended at all. Is there a point where it might be advantageous for us to have like a public hearing down at the Public Safety Complex and only have an exchange of people that are not particularly pleased with it, they can tell us what they think or...
We have had so many of these meetings already that we have vetted this stuff, January and March, that these guys have had regular, at least monthly, sometimes more often meetings than that, that are all public and advertised.
And all of this is, we're in accordance with the state code procedures of how many this days and this days and how many, you know, right now, we're just accepting it and then, but we need to go ahead and plan and get it going.
We'll get it on the website as soon as possible if it's not already on. And Susan, can you send that PDF to Teresa and me and maybe...
They have a...
They've already got them both.
Yes, they have a PDF.
So... Any further discussion on the motion? I've got to call for the question. April.
Would there be a way to put it out where other, where people could read it, maybe at the libraries or somewhere at hard copy or is that...
We'll have a couple available in front desk here.
Too much, okay.
We could put one down at the Gibson Library. It wouldn't be a problem.
One to Chamber Visitor Center.
Yeah, how about that? Where's Tammy? She's here somewhere. There you are.
We're good, we're happy to do that.
Okay, so we'll put one at the Chamber Office, one at the Gibson Library and we'll have one available out front of City Hall, hard copy.
At Turner Center?
And, yeah. Any further discussion on the motion? Now I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. It means to reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Curtis, we thank you. Susan, Matt, CJ, Jack Rigger, Rich Clemmons, Catherine Capery, Dean Everett, and I'm forgetting somebody. I think I, did I get everybody?
I believe you did.
It should be nine names.
CJ, Jack, Matt, Dean, Rich, Catherine, Susan, Curtis.
There's a ninth person supposedly. The mystery man or woman.
They'll let us know.
They'll let us know. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thanks, yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Mary, did you have something?
No, I was just saying, bye Susan, thank you.
She's going to come up and put the Oxford comma in all of Randy's... It's a sore spot. April is here.
Vincent was on.
Vincent Smith, yeah. All right, Vincent Smith. April is here to talk to us about Riverfest. It, geez, it seemed like a couple of weeks ago, ah, it's months away. Well, it's, it's almost here. So do you want to talk a little bit about Riverfest?
Yes, thank you. And I'll give you these handouts so you'll have something concrete to hold on to. There's a couple of changes that need to be made to this before it can truly go public. One is we need to remove the Parks and Rec logo because they're not involved with it this year. They had their own event. So that'll be changed for the posters that we're going to put up around town and also for any future handouts. But it's going to be a really, you know, it's going to be like it always has been with live music. We're hoping to get Sam Nesbit's band. We're still in the fundraising phase right now, so a lot rides on that. But Day Tripp and Adventures will be providing tubes and kayaks for people to have water rides. The tubes are mostly for the kids and the kayaks are mostly for the adults or for families. They have a couple tandem kayaks for that. And they're going to also shuttle people, starting at 9:30 in the morning up to Hampton like we did last year and they'll float down if they want. There's a small fee for that. There will be food, there will be kids activities, there will be yoga and of course, the water blessing because the real kernel of this thing is a celebration of our water and appreciation for clean water and an awareness of how critical it is to keep our water clean because it is necessary for life and it is also part of our spiritual observances. So it's a really critical piece of our lives and I think that once a year is, at least often enough to honor the water. So that's what, that's what we're doing with that. And so I also remember that last year, some of you were generous enough to donate to the cause and so if you feel like doing so this year, that would be... the cause, and so if you feel like doing so this year, that would be greatly appreciated as well. You can do that in person or online, there's donation buttons. And then also, if you would spare me a few extra minutes, Mayor, I, I know that you wanted to hear a little bit about the Ready for 100 program.
Sure.
Is tonight okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay? I went ahead and prepared a PowerPoint for that. Did anyone have any questions about Riverfest? It's August 31st, from 11 to 4, that's the land activities. The first shuttle will, well, the shuttle itself, will leave at 9:30 in the morning, so you would need to be there by 9:30 if you wanted to take the shuttle up to Hampton and be dropped in to float down.
11 to 4?
11 to 4, yeah.
And if somebody wants to give a check, who do you make a favor?
To Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance, and that is the main sponsoring organization.
Mountain Lakes?
Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance would be who you would make your check to. You could also make it out to MLPA for short, if you want to. And our mayor is going to speak, right? You're going to speak?
Oh, yay.
Yep, and we're going to have.
She did both my speeches.
I do too. Other speakers and other presenters, kids activities and all that.
You probably got a discount now for people who want to get money since we called.
So let me see if I can create this thing.
I highlight passionate when I do my water presentation.
Where's our mouse?
I was there last year.
That's right.
It's like, wake up, baby.
There you go.
All right, so this is just one aspect of the whole program. It's pretty large, but mayors for 100% is one way to come at this. The mayors, mayors of over 100 cities now have committed to 100% renewable energies, energy for their communities, and that can be done in steps, it doesn't have to be done all at once. Are we ready for 100% renewable energy? How can we not be, right? We're looking at storms, droughts, and heat waves, and the economic costs and the human costs of that are building and mounting every day. So we are watching that happen, and we know that that's a result of CO2 and fossil fuel burning. So why would we do this? Communities across the country and the globe are experiencing the severe impacts of climate change. Local municipal leadership is necessary. When it won't happen at the higher levels, it can happen in incremental pieces from the bottom up. So the municipal leadership is, is really important there, and it is happening from the bottom up, and it is working. Studies of the US show that it is technologically and economically possible to achieve 100% clean energy across the country by 2050 or even sooner. So according to US Global Climate Change Research Program, the number of heat waves, and that is defined as two or more consecutive days where daily lows exceeded historical July and August temperatures, in 50 major American cities has tripled from an average of two per year in the 1960s to the current average of nearly six per year. And the time period in which heat waves might be expected to occur in the US is 45 days longer than it was in the 1960s, according to the US Global Climate, Global Change Research Program. Even the business world is climbing aboard. Moody's Corporation just bought controlling shares in a firm that measures the risks of climate change, the latest evidence that global warming can threaten the creditworthiness of governments and companies. This is just the last part of the list of the, some of the mayors, and if you look here at number 219, it's Morgantown, so Morgantown's green team, Morgantown has a green team, and that is something that I would recommend for Buchanan as well to form. I know we have a sustainability committee, maybe a green team might be a little bit different than that, and we can talk about what that would look like, but the mayor of Morgantown has adopted goals for 100% clean energy as well. So we are on our way. Over 100 cities, 11 counties, and nine states and districts have adopted. So we're, we're still in the early phases of it, but it's growing. So what does it mean to be committed to this? The Ready for 100 campaign recognizes community commitments as places where a city's leadership has established a goal to transition the entire community to 100% clean renewable energy. This can be through a standalone resolution or proclamation, or integrated into a community's climate action plan or energy action plan. In this case, our 2025 plan can and should be updated to reflect these changes. If not 2025, maybe 2030, 2040, we'll get there. Many of the mayors listed in that list I showed you are members of the Climate Mayors, the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda, founded by Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti, former Houston Mayor Annise Parker, and former Philadelphia Mayor Michael Nutter, which is a group of 86 US mayors in red and blue states working together to strengthen local efforts for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and to supporting efforts for binding federal and global level policymaking. And there's links there, and I can give you those if you want to get more information. From the Global Covenant of Mayors, so there's mayors all around the world now that are involved. From the 2018 Global Aggregation Report, I'm going to read you a couple of things. Globally, the Global Council of Mayors, cities report that heat waves will have the greatest impact on public health. Eastern Europe, Central Asia, and Latin America, and the Caribbean regions are reported to face the most severe effects of biodiversity. In North America and East Asia, the energy sector is reported to be most at risk from heat waves. Cities in Latin America and the Caribbean additionally identify that they expect to have challenges with respect to water security. Many cities are projected to be increasingly exposed to river flooding. Assuming present protection standards, population of the Global Council of Mayors cities exposed to river floods could increase by 240% in a 2 degrees Celsius warmer world, with the strongest rise in river levels within South Asia, Japan, and certain parts of Europe. In the absence of climate change adaptation actions, urban infrastructure will be severely affected, especially in Central and Eastern Europe and some parts of Asia and Latin America. And you think, oh, that's way over there, but we, we go on vacation, we go visit Europe, and those people are going to have to come over here too. And those people, that's right. That's another thing too, that people don't really consider, I think, is that if this stuff is going on in other places of the world, and we don't want a bunch of immigrants, I don't know how to say it eloquently. So that's, that's one part of the problem, is it creates an influx of people. People will be moving over here too. Seeking safer places to live. As well, yeah. Community-wide electricity use, so, I'm sorry, a commitment to 100% renewable energy includes the following elements. Community-wide electricity use, and I'm not going to read the little fine print, I'll just give you the, the big bullets. And we do this by 2035, this is our target year, with 2050 for all energy sectors. Ensure justice, equity, affordability, and access. And this is to prioritize low-income communities, environmental justice communities, and we in West Virginia know all about this, communities burdened by the fossil fuel industry. Clean and renewable resources only, and a transparent and inclusive planning and implementation process to ensure that community members and local businesses have an opportunity to Strong commitments also include, so you could have a weaker or a stronger commitment. Stronger commitments would include all energy sectors, a commitment to transition other energy sectors to 100%, including transportation and heating and cooling. A local generation goal, a goal for how much the community's energy needs will be met by local distributed generation. Does everybody know what that is? Distributed generation is, is more when you have, you put that on your own building rather than relying on a central utility. Near-term implementation steps, at least the first year, but ideally a five-year plan. Commitment to collaboration, which is a commitment to working with surrounding communities in achieving aligned clean energy and equity goals. So the equity part is there. We don't want the poor to be left out, we don't want these environmental justice communities to be left out. And a commitment to advocate policies or regulations at the state, regional, and/or federal level. So we go in small steps. You can be powered by 100% renewable energy. And in this case, a community is powered with 100% renewable energy when the amount of energy generated from renewable energy sources in the community or brought into it equals or exceeds 100% of the annual energy consumed within the community. So that's a zero net. Working towards 100%. A number of communities have pledged support for 100% clean energy, and that's kind of where we are now. Some are demonstrating support for a transition to 100% clean energy by investing in renewable energy for municipal operations. To see a list of cities that have invested in renewable energy for their municipal operations, you can check out EPA's Green Power Communities. To see a list of businesses, communities, and countries that are working towards 100%, you can visit Go 100% Renewable Energy. So whenever you think you're ready to get started, or you want to learn more about it, there's a link, which of course you can't get to until you get on the computer, but I can send you any of these links and information. And I just wanted to kind of get you started, it's just a really basic understanding of the program.
Can you forward your PowerPoint presentation to Teresa, so we can include it in our minutes for tonight?
Absolutely, well.
Questions for April?
We, I think it's interesting, you know, if you, if you listen to Fox or CNN or MSNBC or watch it, the, you know, there's so many dire forecasts out there that some people are saying, we don't do something completely renewable, 100% in 12 years, we're all going to be history.
Right.
I like your word transition, because I think, I, I support renewable energy. I don't think we can do it immediately, but I endorse the transition, that that's something we need to move toward and achieve at some point in time, 100%, that just makes common sense to me. But I also remember a class I had when I was a freshman in college, too many years ago to tell you when it was, but the, there was a professor that said, one of the interesting things about human beings is they keep building things where they're going to get wiped out.
Yep.
And I thought that was really interesting, and that's true.
Yep, there's a lot of coastal flooding.
Yeah, coastal, river flooding, and, you know, we, we sort of.
Islands going underwater.
Ask for our own problems by not paying attention to them, so.
You're right.
But I think your presentation is very interesting and very thought-provoking, and I think it's important for the future.
Thank you, and I appreciate you all letting me speak today on this point.
There's a footnote, Thomas was a freshman in college 57 years ago.
You did the math that quickly, or were you there too?
I'm always there. Okay, April, we've heard.
Thanks a lot, McCollough.
That was a good one.
I haven't thought about it like that, David, oh my God. Long, yeah. I may have to take a nap, David, I'm going to.
Okay.
That wouldn't be the first time. Metaphorically. That's because your speech was too difficult.
Wait, wait for these headlines. Thomas snap straight count.
We have too much fun at these meetings, though. He needs, thanks again, April.
Thank you, Mayor.
Department of Board reports. The good news is, is Callie Crown and Sam is on vacation.
Good news for her.
And Jerry says he'll take off if you'd rather not ever.
Not too good, let's keep on going.
He'd like to go back on vacation.
So we got.
Jerry, you're first up.
We're ready for Andy, right?
I received my green infrastructure practice certification, I'm working on the paving bid specs. I'll go over in August 22nd. Water department removed the non-functioning hydrant on Franklin Street, that's in preparation for us to build the, the street beside CBS, it was actually located in the area, but we would have to expand the street end, and the hydrant was very low flow, so JP and Kelly had talked about it, supervised me in the electric to remove the hydrant, that's been done. They're repairing a valve on Third Avenue, continued clearing brush for the installation of the early warning monitoring system. Sewer department threw one finishing, finishing up with some cleanup work out of less few acres on that project to complete. Cleared the right-of-way for the CJ Martin sewer line extension on Brushy Court, and they've got two employees testing for Class 1 operator and two testing for Class 3. The street department crews working on clearing brush from the riverbank in preparation for the Army Corps of Engineers inspection on August 19th, completed sidewalks from the sidewalk assistance program on Bed Street, and hopefully we'll get a work on South Spring Street and do the site work and development of the street beside CBS next week. Install a new surface on the basketball court as part of the grant over at North Buchanan Park. Under engineering, local flood control project again, the inspection is scheduled for August the 19th with the Army Corps. The ACP Waterline System Improvement Project, project should be completed by the middle of August. The asphalt overlay repair project will begin August 5th and take approximately five to seven days to complete. Gateway West, Jay's been in discussions with the DOH on July 29th, and can expect notice to proceed within the next four to six weeks. We were hoping to already have that notice to proceed, so it's, it looks like it's going to be dragged out into fall, early winter before we get a notice to proceed. The water department, water storage tank inspections, Port Act plans to begin with the inspections in August, and we'll take them approximately two weeks to complete the field required inspections. The demolition of St. Joseph's tanks being completed by Isler demolition, they got that completed on July 16th. The GPS equipment software purchase, expects the issue notice to proceed on August 8th. And the Riverfront Park grant, everything's completed on that grant with the exception of the installation of the camera system and a few bulwarks to limit vehicle or traffic and pedestrian access. And that's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions.
Questions for the fresh bag from two weeks away, Jerry, your honor?
So you mentioned the work on the street next to CBS. When will we see the closures of those two one-way alleys?
We will do, we will have to do the site work. Part of that paving bid includes the actual paving of that street surface. Once that's completed, then within a couple weeks of that completion, I'm not anticipating the paving work or much of the big one probably to be done prior to probably sometime first week of October. So we're looking at, at probably an end of October kind of date for closure of those other two alleys.
Okay. They're going to have curbs or sidewalks, or?
We will have, it's not part of this first phase program, the, the first phase is simply to extend the street, then we'll go back and pour the sidewalk, we'll actually put a sidewalk in. And remember, there is, with that, we have the ability to add a parking lane on that street. It is wide enough with the current alley, we've got 36 feet of surface there we can use.
Hey, you can, for the sidewalk, demarcate parallel parking slots?
Yes.
Also.
More parking in the gang?
Hey, it'll be over 500 if we get 11 more.
We want to update that map so badly, don't we? Also, real quick, any, any word on the tick marks on Main Street for the parking?
Talked with the contractor on, because again, we wanted the same contract you've been handed in the last time for us to paint those, and do, he's done a really good job on the ADA spaces, and he'll also be doing, we're wanting to give us a quote on doing the parking lots as well. So we've had that conversation, I don't have a schedule yet, but I anticipate the next couple weeks.
Okay. Would that include curb painting too?
On Main?
Yeah.
Sure. Was brought to my attention over at the college on Mead, Camden, and so forth, curb painting is really in dire straits over there as well. Is that going to be included, or?
Not in this contract, we, we typically send our, once our mowing slows down, we have our mowing crew do that either before the season starts or after, so we'll freshen it up, most of the parking areas around the college. And two, we have to add the signage for the new parking order, so, I was asking about that this evening, we do add the signs. We have the poles fabricated, we do not have the vinyl yet for the signs, but that's a, that's about a day's worth of work for a couple of guys. So I, I feel confident that we can have those installed in three weeks.
Other questions for Jerry? Tell all the guys, we appreciate it.
A little bit.
All of our facilities.
Thank you.
Mayor, I forgot a couple of things, would I be able to just tell you a couple of things I forgot to say on my presentation? I'm so sorry. But I wanted to let you know that we are having a tour of the water plant on our Riverfest this year. That's. That's something new that Kelly and Arnold has agreed to do for us, and that'll be tied to one of the kayaking trips. And the other thing is I passed out to you a sample resolution from the Blacksburg City Council on how they did their Ready for 100 resolution. So that's all I had to say.
Take a peek at it.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up is, we got to see what Moneybag Jenkins says we can afford.
Thank you.
See you, ladies.
Okay, I'll give you your balances ending July 31st. General Fund had 695,003, you had 695,399. The CD had 84,557. The stored landmark savings, $3,023. Full tax, $44,842. And financial stabilization, 512,533. So, and once I move the $25,000 donation from Jenkins Automotive from General Fund over into the Stockard Youth Center campaign, and I count the pledges towards that campaign, there's going to be $309,060 in the Stockard Youth Center capital campaign. As Mayor alluded to, Rotary donated $5,700 to the police department. And Matt wants to use that towards the computer in the evidence room and towards the cost of the body armor and uniforms. They had sent a little letter and asked that that be used towards those departments, but not towards salaries, so they already had ideas where they wanted that. Rotary donated the $6,200 to the fire department. Now, what I'd like to do with that is just put it in a savings account along with the $32,010 that we received from that sale of that fire truck to earmark that for down payment for a fire truck next year that JB has talked to you all about. And the reason I want to put it over in a savings because if I leave it in General Fund, I have to report that as cash balance on hand. And, you know, just so going in flight that, and you know, I have to kind of keep telling you every time you don't have 38,000 of that belongs to, belongs to the fire department. So I'd like to do that. And I thought savings because it'd be readily available when something comes up with a fire truck. And he can tell you a little more about the process of that. You have to make the down payment. It takes, I guess, a year or two to actually get a truck. So the down payment locks in price. So we're grateful to the Jenkins family and the Rotary Club for all their generous donations to us and to everyone that makes donations to our projects. We're very happy about that. We're, on your revenues and expenses, I apologize, we don't have the new copier that you give me permission to get, and the copies in there are four of them. I can't even read them. So you will get good, you'll be able to read your revenues and expenses when we get these minutes back out to you. But your revenues total for July was 489,827. Your expenses was 407,114, so 82,712 more in revenues than expenses. Invoices that you have in there could be approved tonight. Just to point out, you budgeted for certain groups to receive money, and we paid half of those for the fiscal year, and we'll pay the other half probably December, January. But 15,000, that's accounted as development, door to, 7,500 for the airport authority, 5,000 country roads transit, and 2,500 to the health department. So that's half of what they were approved in your budget to give them. We also had 1,200 for the PTS, that's the police software annual maintenance, and 1,636 central supply for concrete and sidewalk in Trader's Alley and Fayette Street area. Then I just want to let you know too that we're receiving several resumes for the position of porticulturists, and some of those look very good, so I think we're going to be okay there. Those are due in by August 23rd. That's it on this. I got a bunch of revision later to talk to you about.
Questions for Ambi? I would entertain a motion that we approve our July financials. The motion by Rylands, a second by Al Ball. Discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for a question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Takes us down to Chief Kimball. How's it going, JB?
Good, how about you all?
Oh, we're, we're called it a dream.
Yeah, oh, yeah. A nightmare, a dream, right?
Yeah, that's right. Some days.
First thing I'd like to do is thank the Rotary for their donation to the fire department. They also gave a separate donation to the Buckhannon Volunteer Fire Department, so, which has priorities also that they're looking at. So that was huge for our fire department. Couple of things, I'll be real quick. We got a, I spoke with Teresa the other day, our list of eligibility, eligible firefighter testing is gone. We sent emails to everybody and they inquired, we had one person. So we're going to start ramping that up here shortly to test. So if you look at the responses that were handed to you, there's 104 responses in July, 62, out of the total responses for the year so far, 741. 62% of those are in the city, 38% outside the city in the first due war on Mewcheway. And there's a, there's a difference there because we do provide a different service in the city than we do outside the city. We do not run, as I've said before, medical calls automatically outside the city, emergency medical calls. So that doesn't account for the difference. If we run medical calls in our total first due district, that would probably be swapped. It would be the opposite. So because you're dealing with about 8,000 people outside the city in our district versus 5,600 in the city, so the EMS load, call volume would be a lot larger. So we do have four volunteer members that are going to be taking promotional exams, just like our career staff. That's all because of the accreditation process. We have to have standardized training, and if you're captain and a volunteer, you've got to have the same training and aspects in the volunteer side as you do the paid side. So they're, they're going to take the tests for promotional exams. They fall under, they don't fall under civil service like the city guys, but they will fall under the same criteria. They get a point for every year of service. They have to score a 70 accumulative on the written test to be able to be promoted. And that exam's going to be in mid-September. So I'd really like to encourage, you know, we have the yard sale coming up, and people really don't like to walk very far to the yard sale.
What a surprise. They don't like to walk very far on Main Street either.
I want to be very nice and say I would encourage people not to block streets because if we have an emergency and it's beyond the yard sale and they're not standing by their car, and it's, it's a, it's a true emergency call, their car will probably be moved forcibly by a larger vehicle. So I don't want that to happen. But I have seen, you know, the typical Lincoln Street, the Bulgus Streets, they get very, very congested, and if we had an emergency, it gets rough.
Last year, we had a car stopped on Connaught Street.
Yes.
At the bottom of Quality Hill.
Yes.
Like, you can't make this stuff up.
Yeah, and I almost got in an argument because with that person, they didn't want to move. They stopped on Route 11 and were yard selling, their car was sitting in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
So I can't make this stuff up. So please, media, the outs, people, please do not block streets, highways, quarter H, you know, I mean, let's talk about all people.
Was that a local person that did that?
No, no. Well, I'll say, it was nobody I had ever seen here, and I hope I never see again. Sorry. But anyhow, we'll move on. Please don't park in the middle of the street. Firefighter Ethan Smith will be attending a pump repair class up near Philadelphia. That's part of the accreditation process. We're learning, Roger Boyard was a retired Elkins fireman who, for years, had did all our maintenance. Well, Roger is almost 80 years old now and not capable of doing it. We had a valve go bad on a truck. The valve was $77 and travel time was 1,100. So be the cheapy, I've learned from Ambi, being the cheapy I am, I'm going to send a guy to learn how to repair that. So that way we only have $77 in the valve and a little bit in the class, plus, you know, it really helps for acute problems. If we have a problem, he'll be able to repair it right there on the spot.
I'm so proud of you, JB.
And fourth known as Chief Cheepy.
Yeah, yeah. Just talk to my guys, they'll tell you. So that'll be, that'll be in September. He'll be gone for four days, and that'll be a good certification. There are two types of pumps we have. We're going to get this one because it's the one we have the most of. Then we're going to later on send him to the, so. He's very good with his hands, he's a machinist, why not take advantage of that?
Absolutely.
We had eight members attend a auto extrication course in Elkins, which accumulated 160 hours in two days and a half. We have 11 members getting ready to attend a trench confined space rescue class at Elkins also. 11 members, and that's a 24-hour course, that'll be almost 300 additional training hours. Our guys are eating it up. I mean, we're, we're cooking the training hours. The more you give them, the more they want. So I think that's about all I've got.
That's a lot of stuff.
Yeah. I tried to be quick.
Questions for Chief Kimball? Almost said Chief Cheepy?
Chief Cheepy.
Can I have your notes before you...
I don't think he won these. Check his scratch.
Tell, tell all the guys that he's, he's like crossed that parking lot three or four times, I'm always shout to somebody. We mean it. Thanks, JB.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is City Attorney Tom O'Neil.
I defer until the vertical strategic council, Kelly.
Okay, that's fine. What does that merit? She goes, I thought he already talked.
Smart job.
Jenny, you say talk and talk.
Not allowed.
First thought and some information, you got all kinds of stuff in your packet. You've got the proclamation wishing Rob Barber well, along with the accompanying PR that Kelly generated. There's a proclamation for the Jenkins family with their excellent gift to Stockard. There's a proclamation for the 50th class reunion of Buckhannon Upshire High School. We did that a week or so ago. There's a really cool article that someone else sent me on walkability, and I encourage you to read it. It really speaks volumes about what we're trying to accomplish with complete streets and ADA access and being a certified retirement community, all those things. There is a really super, really recent cutting-edge article on how opioid death rates have soared. West Virginia continues to be number one in the United States in deaths due to opioids. There is a Freedom of Information Act request by Josh Hinchman regarding code violation complaints. And there is a temporary order designating Doug Loudon as the acting chief while Matt Gregory takes a week's vacation. Consent agenda consists of six things. If you approve your consent agenda, you would be approving the following. You'd be approving the minutes of our last regular meeting on July 18. You'd be approving our building and wiring permits. You would be approving the payment of the general fund bills. You would be accepting the resignation of Janella Cochran from the Animal Care and Control Commission. She was a non-voting member, but a member nevertheless. You would be approving the appointment of Will Squires to the Buckhannon Upshire Parks and Rec Board. I would think that his mom would be very pleased with that. And you would be accepting the resignation of Bill Thomas as one of the three city representatives to the Buckhannon Upshire Airport Authority's Board of Directors. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. So a motion by Mr. Thomas may have a second to his motion.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. And that takes us down to strategic items. We have already acted on the acceptance of the submittal of the 2025 comprehensive plan. So F2 is ordinance 437 that we've been kicking around for a month or so now, which pertains to employee health insurance benefits. And this would be the first of the two reading ordinance. Mr. O'Neill, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the ordinance that you have before you in the packet is the version that was discussed at the last meeting with respect to the city for new employees or, I'm sorry, for employees whose dates of employment begin on and after the 1st of this year, the city will, the employee will pay a portion of the health insurance premiums based upon what kind of plan they enroll in. That is $125 per month for the employee and spouse, $100 per month for an employee plus child, and $150 per month for employees, spouse, and child or children, or otherwise a family plan, $150 per month for that. There are also items in here that authorize the city to make the payroll deductions in order to pay, pay these premiums and make this, take this contribution and other boilerplate that we have discussed previously. I'm happy to hear any questions.
Questions for Tom? Would you like to read it by caption? I don't want to put this on the table.
Ordinance number 437 of the City of Buckhannon, an ordinance defining certain employee medical and prescription drug insurance benefits for full-time employees of the City of Buckhannon, establishing the city's share of employees' health insurance premium to be paid, establishing the city's share of health insurance premium for a full-time employee's spouse and qualifying children, and setting an effective date.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard Mr. O'Neill's presentation, and we've been talking about this going all the way back, I guess, to March, April, and here we are now in August. I would entertain a motion that we approve this ordinance on the first of two required readings. I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. I have a second by Mr. Sanders. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I will call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
JB, while you're still here, I keep putting it on here, just that I hate kicking the can down the road, but we've talked about this and the discussion about trying to emulate what we did for the police department two or three years ago, giving you that opportunity to, as needed, if you don't have enough full-time guys, you'd have that opportunity for us. And again, if we do this, we've got to go through the Home Rule Board, and we wouldn't want to wait too terribly long. When's that, when's the next meeting of the Home Rule Board?
October 15.
Yeah, so we, I guess that's something we'd have to get on. If we don't get on it by October, the next meeting would be January. January or February or something like that. So are we still on board to evolve to a draft for us to examine?
I've talked to Tom, not really, just about the Home Rule, how that works, and you know, what we've been talking about. I went over, talked to Chief Gregory about the process that he went through. And you know, I've come, there's, there's a lot of pros and some cons that I wanted to run by council before you make the decision to pursue this. You know, the, to have a person additional for, for like events and stuff like that would be nice. I also want you to realize that we have set up this year to do a strategic plan through Jeff Harvey, and I truly feel that that strategic plan will be proof that we need consistent staffing, you know, maybe not right now, but in, in the long run, we're going to have to have more consistent staffing, more people per shift. You know, but like Strawberry Festival, you know, if Festival Friday has a big event going on or there's big events, have that extra person. But when you look at our requirements for training, you know, that you're going to be very limited to who you can find. I mean, because you're going to have to have a, you know, somebody's going to have to get a medical physical, it'd be kind of like a 90-day temp. I would truly feel that they should probably go through a, a physical agility test because they're going to be asked to do the same thing that the firefighters are doing. You know, you're, you're looking, we, our firefighters are required to have a minimum of firefighter one, hazmat ops, they have to be EMTs, okay? And then rescue ops. So you're looking at that plus a pumper operator. Then when you go on down, our mentor program is 112 hours. Anybody that joins or comes to the fire department, whether they're paid or volunteer, has to go through the mentor program. So if it's somebody from outside our scope, that's 112 hours of training, just in-house that they have to go through before they get on a truck. So if, if they don't follow this to the, the plan that we have in place, they, it could have a negative impact on our ISO rating. So I want you to understand that a lot of the time, if, if somebody comes in part-time... So I want you to understand that a lot of the time, if, if somebody comes in part-time, all they're gonna be doing is training for a while. So, you know, our guys are, are training a lot anyhow, but you know, the, the career guys are going to this training and still working their shifts. So, you know, I'll continue to work with Tom. Probably have to need to come up with some sort of job description along similar to what our guys already have.
I think that's what Matt did.
Yeah.
And we had talked too about, maybe instead of being a designated person, there might be a pool of two, three, four people that you could draw upon.
And I didn't, and I, I'm not that familiar with home rule, because I know when I looked at, Matt and I looked at his, it's 25% of their force, which is, could be up to two. You know, when you look at us, there's only seven, so you can only, you know, if you go by the 25% rule, you're only at one.
Unless you did it on the total number of hours on average worked by your department, and you established an hour formula that would be allocable to the part-time guys. So I don't know what those hours would be. You know, there's 168 hours in the week, and you've got two guys on at least.
168.
So that would be 330-ish hours. Maybe it's 10% of that or something per, I don't know. There's, there's, we gotta start somewhere.
Sure.
I've seen this, I've seen this as, when Matt and I first started talking about this five or six years ago, when Michael Doss was still here, we saw it as an additional tool for the toolbox. And it didn't, it took us two or three years after we worked that home rule ordinance up to actually employ.
That's what Matt actually told me.
Yeah. It took a while, yeah. So this isn't something that's gonna happen overnight. And, you know, some, some of these questions that you're talking about, I mean, we should know by November, December on the SAFE grant?
We should know hopefully by October.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we're gonna start this strategic plan with Jeff Harvey. And that, that, you know, we have the effective response force written in of what it takes to go to each type of call that we respond to and stuff like that. But the strategic plan will be, you know, what do we want to be in three years? Where do we want to be at five? Where do we expect to be call volume-wise? What services will we still be providing?
This isn't the county-wide strategic plan that we were trying to get done before. So now.
So we're gonna be, if we ever get that, it'll be, you know, here we, we doing it again. And that's, that's very discouraging that we couldn't get, get the county on board to do that.
Counsel, I'd really encourage us to let JB and Tom collaborate, see what they can come back to us with. We'd have a chance to look at it and at least to draft ordinance form before we would advance it to Home Rule Board.
Mr. Skinner, can I just interject a couple things?
Sure.
One, you know, it's speaking of the SAFER grant that we applied for, which would allow us to potentially hire up to three, or three firefighters in addition to what we have right now. So you would have one that would, each one would fit into each shift that is currently, that is currently set up. So instead of two per shift, we'd have three per shift. If, if a minimum staffing of two was established, which it is right now, right now, you know, John Burgnoli's on vacation, for example. So right now, his, his shift has to be filled with one of our other paid staff members, which increases over time and increase, and, and changes the complexity of, of who's working when. If we, if we did, if we were awarded the paid-for grant and if we were to accept it and have three additional firefighters, if someone like John or Tanner wanted to go on vacation, their shift wouldn't be interrupted because you would have still a minimum staffing of two, but there would be a total of three on that, on that staff. So that's one plus I see for the SAFER grant. The other thing I, I've, I've been thinking about and have talked to JB some, but the city of, of Elkins, which is very similar to us in the way we're, the way we're set up and the size of, of city that we are, instead of having a part-time person, they have a full-time, more of an administrative role that works Monday through Friday in a, just for example, say, say nine to five. And, and that person would, as we're going through accreditation, would work more on the, the nuts and bolts part of the fire department with the chief. If a call should go out, he or she would go on that call, but would not work the 24-hour on, 48-hour off, 24-hour on schedule. He or she would work a set schedule, much like JB, Monday through Friday with a, with a more of a, of a typical schedule. I, I, I'm not, from my, from my vantage point, I'm not sure that we should just limit the discussions of, of potential just to part-time. Should we look at all of these different aspects and what they could do for the department to increase the productivity and the efficiency, but also not, you know, not, not increase so much our budget to where it's not feasible? So I, I just, I just wanted to throw those couple of things out there. If, if we were awarded the SAFER grant, it seems like some of these issues that we have from time to time would be, which would be lessened or, or more resolved if the minimum staffing remains at two and, and we have three more people. And I understand that we will have a financial obligation at some point for three additional folks with our department, but that if we were awarded this grant, it does give us some time to plan for how we will financially contribute and, and invest with, with, with additional staffing. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, I think that's part of J D's, he's saying that he's working on a strategic plan. Is that correct, JB?
Yes.
I think that's, Robbie, that's part of that process, I would hope. And I also, you know, at some point in time, if we do get the, the grant, the likely it is we'll have to, when the grant funding is over with, we're gonna have to increase the, the fire fee for our citizens. And I also think, you know, the county commission has got to come along with us at some point in time for planning this. And I, I still think first due is an important area that we need to look at for the future.
Definitely would have to be on the table.
Now, a lot of, a lot of municipalities have a first due fee for their firefighters.
Right.
And we need to take a look at that seriously.
I mean, that's what I was concerned about when you talked about this grant. You're, you're getting three full-time people paid for three years. But I'm not going to agree or sign on to that unless you can show me how you're going to, how we're gonna pay for this. You know, you have a performance agenda of what we're gonna do, who's gonna do it, when it's gonna get done, and how, where, how are we going to assume this financial responsibility? And hopefully, that's what Jeff can help you with. But that's after the fact. We've already, the clock is ticking.
So. Well, I think a lot of us know what will need to be done. There'll be people that are upset about it, but the deal is you get, you get what you pay for.
Well, in a realistic world, you know, often it up, up in people's taxes or fees, when you look at communities around us that have volunteer fire departments, you know, a couple of them east or one north of us, it's $75 a year. For volunteer fire department fee. The city of Bridgeport is 100 for inside the city and 150 outside the city.
And the county commission has had the same fee for how many years?
Well, we've been unable to agree to do this collectively, so.
Well, I understand that the first due ordinance is something that we could do without the sanction or consent of the county commission.
Exactly.
I mean, Bridgeport has it, Elkins has a first.
Yeah, for several cities. See, when you look at the lawsuit, you know, Elkins went through the lawsuit for first due, Bridgeport, you know, and, and the courts realized that a city is actually responsible for a fire district. There's like separation.
Yep, right.
So your district, and you can charge a lone fee, outside the city, you can actually charge one and a half tons if you pay what you charge in the city.
Correct.
You know, it's, you know, we're planning a meeting with the county over a couple issues and, and, you know, we don't know where it's gonna go. But at, at some point in time, we gotta look at realistic funding.
Well, the city is subsidizing.
Well, that's correct. In an ideal world, every district in Upshire County, every district has a fire department currently. There's a, there's a fire department located in every district. Every district would, in an ideal world, would be able to support their fire department. So Banks District, the people that live in Banks District should be supporting their fire department. But what, what is, what is the reality in Upshire County is 95% of the businesses are north of the high school, and a good chunk of 75% of the county residents are north or of the high school. And, you know, so inside the Buchanan first due area lies a good chunk of our population and a, and basically all but, you know, 25 or 30 of our, of our county's businesses. So if you live outside of, just outside of the Buchanan Corporation limits, Buchanan is still, is still your fire department, but if you live in Tenerton, your, your fire fee that you're paying to Upshire County is equally distributed among the other, among all the departments. So really theoretically, you are, you are paying for a department that is never going to show up at your house. There are departments that would never come because of the way the district is, just like if you live in Tenerton, you were currently helping, you're currently providing services to, say, the Selbyville area. But Selbyville's not gonna come to Tenerton most likely, and Buchanan's not gonna go to Selbyville most likely, just because of the geographic of, of the county. But that's, that's the issue, is we are, because we are the hub, because this is the county seat, and this is where the population and the businesses are, the, this is, this is, this is the area that, that is contributing and supporting Upshire County's volunteer fire department makeup.
When you, when you look at how ISO grades the fire department, and I've had people ask why to wash a Buchanan and get more than everywhere else. Every other fire department in Upshire County has a pumping requirement of 1,250 gallons per minute. You can do that with one truck, okay, for ISO. We're required to have a 3,500 gallon per minute pumping capacity with three engines. We have 20 buildings over three stories in our district, and so we're required to have a ladder truck. Nowhere else in Upshire County is that required. So the extra expense also is an apparatus to meet our standard. So it's.
Well, and those other departments also get some credit for having Buchanan as a, as a mutual aid fire department if something goes wrong. So if Adrian, we are, we are a mutual aid fire department with Adrian. Adrian is a protection class four, partly in because Buchanan is a backup fire department.
I can sit here and tell you, Emma, and I'll just, real quickly, if, if we get extra staffing and we go from a class four to a three in ISO, it's a 7% to 11% drop in the movement insurance. You're looking at 6,100 households. I can't tell you how many of them have insurance, but most of them in our district would have insurance.
Sure.
Okay? So on an average of $800 a year, you're looking at anywhere from $70 to $80 a year, somebody said, saves on 60, over 6,000 households. That doesn't include commercial, okay? Because I don't have those numbers, you know? So, so the amount of money you save just by going from a four to a three is, is huge that you put back in your.
Just like it was when we went from a five to a four.
Yeah. I would, I would guess that your numbers, as far as if you, if you did a 10- or 15-year examination of the fire department, is probably not too far from what the police department has experienced. Matt has been with us, I think, for 23 years now. And do you know how many police officers we fired in his 23 years? 24.
Yeah.
And in his 15 years as chief, we've hired 16 police officers. So it's, it does have anything to do with Matt Gregory.
Yeah.
But the transient nature of people not staying in these, that's the reason that this part-time thing. Or if Brian Elmore goes down with a bum shoulder or a bum ankle or, you know, we've had all those kinds of things in the recent past too. This part-time officer would, would firefighter would give you a little more flexibility, as would the staffing of three per shift. I think we'd get all that stuff. And I don't want to get too far out there on the periphery. We don't want to do your strategic plan for you tonight, but we understand the elements that you're kicking around and trying to do the best staffing that you can do. I'd really, all I'm asking for tonight is that we continue the discussion.
Sure.
And we let Tom and JB do some collaborating and sharing with the ranks of the fire department to come back with something for us here in the next. It'd be nice if we could look at it in September, but it's not the end of the world if we don't. But if we're gonna do something for October, we'd have to get on it pretty, pretty quickly. So are we good with, we're not kicking the can down the road, we're just gonna let these guys do some collaborating. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
We don't even, I don't even think we need to take a vote on it. We'll just trust JB and Tom to come back with something. All right, F4 is approval of resolution 2019-09. It's a budget revision. It's budget revision number two for the general fund fiscal year 2019-20. Ambi, lay it on us.
The, the main reason I brought it before you is because the theater grant, of course, was approved in July. When, when we did the budget in March, we didn't know this, so we have to budget for the grant that we were approved for in July. The grant is a 50/50 share like the others were, $67,000. So under the Arts and Culture line item, I want to put 128 in there. 67 for the grant that we will be receiving from the state and 61,000 that we're going to recycle back into the theater. We received a check this month for the last grant. So we, we were able to do that last year, recycle what we received from Arts and Culture back into the grant again. And that way, you know, it, it's taken care of. Otherwise, you would have to come up with $67,000. So I put in there 128,000, 67 for the grant, 61,000 for the city's share, which is recycling the check back in from, from Arts and Culture that we received. And then I had already budgeted in another theater line item, 6,000, and we received 10,000 from.
First Energy.
First Energy, yes. So that's for that part of the grant. Also, the money that just came in for the police department, since I was doing this budget revision, I threw that in there too. The 5,700 will go into the police department supplies and Capitol Outlane. Well, actually, 5,700 will go into the Capitol Outlane. That's for the computer and the evidence room, the body armor and uniforms. And then they also received donations towards National Night Out from Rotary. They've received a note, there's 750 from Rotary and from Walmart for 2,500. So I put that back in, the supplies for the items they're gonna pay for National Night Out. The total budget revision is 136,950, increasing your revenues and increasing your expenditures. So I'm not taking anything out of your contingency. We, we have it in there and we're using what we're recycling back in, I call it.
Everybody follow that? Yep. It's all, it all makes sense. I would entertain a motion that we approve resolution 2019-09. Have a motion by Thomas, may I have a second to his motion? I have a motion by Thomas, a second by Bucklue. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Thanks. Roll call now. Uh, actually, we can do that. She hasn't set that up for signature, but sure, we'll do.
It's a resolution, though, right?
Just to be consistent, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucklue?
Yes.
Mr. Rylance?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mrs. Alba?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes as well, so it carries unanimously, Mr. Sanders. How about that? F5 is a discussion of draft ordinance regarding what would be ordinance 438 relative to purchasing. So this is one of those, Tom O'Neill, Ambi Jenkins, right?
Yeah, we're, I just briefly, the, we are working on a purchasing ordinance in order to just make sure that our shoelaces are tied very securely with respect to, to the requirements of code. The ordinance, which I expect will be ready for first reading at the next meeting, will provide for a couple of things. So let me first, first say that it will cover construction projects because they're already covered by state code under Chapter 5, Article 22. Construction projects are already covered from, from a perspective of purchasing. But with respect to purchasing of materials, supplies and equipment, we will, we will follow the, the state's model and require sealed bids for anything in excess of $25,000 and three rippen quotes for anything in excess of $10,000. And, you know, things like employment contracts and that are not, they're not, they're exempt from purchasing rules, generally speaking, at least when you're talking about engagement. But I'd be happy to take any questions on the subject that.
We're not ready to act on anything.
No, there's nothing to, there's nothing to act on.
Haven't we been following it now?
I'm sorry?
Haven't we followed this?
We have, we have been. This is kind of a, well, really, this is just a, a ratification or a, or a formalization of where our existing practices are, just to make sure. We have a couple of, we were operating, we're operating under what's set out in state code.
Right.
And state code is pretty clear, but, but there's, there's an ambiguity in there and I would be comfortable if we had an ordinance just to cover.
Okay. To my recollection, we followed this law.
Yes.
I think, I think one of the things I've attended in the last few months, Mr. McCuskey, the state auditor, has mentioned municipal functions. If you don't have an ordinance yet, I think about, it's, it all, it's all consistent with what Tom's saying.
That's John?
Yeah.
JB, his son, John's son.
Okay.
Yeah, JB is John's son. All right, thanks, Tom. That's it for strategic. We're done with comments and announcements. Man, we're flying through this stuff.
Are we?
Got to have the time for another delectable solid before I go to bed here tonight. Mr. Thomas, what do you have for us?
Well, I want to thank the individuals, Jenkins family for the outstanding contribution for Stockard and also thank Rotary for what they have done. And I also want to mention Megan Lively, that I know both Allison and, I mean, Lisa and Greg, and my prayers and thoughts go out to them. I will, I will talk about peripheral now, but when you, when you start talking about the fire department and what the future's going to be for us, both in my thinking anyway, or forecasting, I think at some point in time, metro government, certain parts of the commission and the city council will have some tremendous opportunities for savings. And it's going to happen at some point in time. I probably won't be around to see that happen, but it's going to happen because the cost equation is so critical for municipalities and counties, especially like Upshur County and Buchanan. It doesn't make any sense to have a lot of duplication of efforts. And that's being done. And I think if you brought in an independent, objective analysis from outside the city and the county and had a look at both the governing bodies, they would come up with some really interesting ideas on how we could save money for both the county citizens and the city citizens. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mrs. Buckle?
I also want to thank the Jenkins family. I wish I could have been there for that presentation. I've known the family for years and he's been very generous for a lot of things over the years for this county. Also, the Rotary, very happy that they're going, we're still going to get the money for Stockard youth and the fire department, the police department. I think that's terrific. And I also want to thank the Misker family. They recently gave $10,000 for the archery club and the county, the kids at the high school. I think that's what's for them. I think that's really generous of them also.
Good stuff, all the way around.
Yep.
Mr. Ryland?
Just echo the rest of the comments and thank all the people that are supporting our efforts in our community. And it's always more effective and efficient when we work together, so.
Absolutely. Well stated. Mrs. Alba?
You all have said it perfect. Okay, I agree with you.
You endorse it all.
I'm tired. So I'm not going to repeat it.
Mr. Skinner?
Had a great time today at the St. Joseph's Hospital Foundation Golf Tournament up at Snowshoe. A lot of our community members were there. That's a, that's an excellent event that raises money each year for, you know, a different initiative at the hospital. Our community comes together to support the hospital. And although my team didn't win, we had, we had a great time, so.
Did I win that golf ball that dropped?
I don't think so. I didn't hear your name. They couldn't fly the helicopter because of bad weather, so they brought the power truck in, so.
Skinner tears it up on that putt putt course, I mean.
Oh, yeah, it really does. Matt Kerner was up there today too.
I saw that. He had it all in his face, but what a tough job he has.
Lisa and Skip, they did, they did a great job, so.
Mr. Sanders?
Well, I echo what everyone else has said. Alicia Lively is my neighbor, so, you know, her and, and of course Karen Cartwright and just so many, everyone else that was named when you opened the meeting. We have to keep them in our thoughts and prayers. They need some, you know, hugs and just some real help during these times. Also, big thanks to the Jenkins family and, you know, we got to spend a bit of time with John and his sons and Sheila and they were just thrilled to help out. I mean, they were just absolutely, you know, thrilled to help with the projects and all the other, again, Mitt, you know, that have helped with so many things. And we had a great day today at the department.
Waste collection.
Waste collection department. We had a tour. I learned more about the waste department. I was really glad that we got to take that tour. Jeff Wampley and Jerry Arnold, of course, you know, made us feel very welcome, had a good meeting out there. So our thanks to all of those folks and people that work so hard every day. Before I had this job, I just set my garbage bag out once a week, it was gone. I didn't, I didn't know what happened to it, but...
Now you know.
Now I know. They do a tremendous job, tremendous job.
Mr. Mayor? We want to thank the honor guard.
Ah, there, there you go. That made me think of...
Participating. Yeah, a year or so ago, we were putting up flag poles for the police department and job on new flag pole. You know, we really ought to have an installation of an American state flag at all of our facilities. And Jerry said we can make that happen. Waste Collection put theirs up and the water plant has one and the sewer plant has one. And next Monday, since we're moving the water board meeting up from Thursday to Monday due to the municipal egg conference, the honor guard will be there at 3:45 next Monday to dedicate the water board flag pole. And then two weeks from today, at the sanitary plant, sewer plant, we'll do it again at the Samuel S. Ludlow Sanitary Sewer Plant. Is that what you were going to say, Ray?
Yes.
Did I cut you off? Do you have anything else?
No, I haven't.
I got just a couple of things. Reminder, water board meeting for Thomas and Skinner's reminder especially, has been moved to next Monday. Tour at 3, 3:45 is the dedication of the honor guard. Next Tuesday is National Night Out. If Callie was here, she would have reminded everyone. And that's from 6 to 10. I'm going to be in Huntington, so maybe some of the rest of you could pop your head in if you get free between 6 and 10. That's next Tuesday evening, August 6th. I would request a very short, five minutes or less executive session to discuss a property matter. So, I have a motion by Mr. Thomas. I have a second to his motion and Mrs. Alba has seconded the motion. Discussion on the motion? No. Call for the question. No action will be taken. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed like sign. I would entertain a motion that we adjourn from our regular session at 8:41.